I'd like to follow the order of the seven, three, twenty-five, by the commission meeting. And we'll start. By a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Knebel?
Here.
Ms. Dobson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart? Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Aravalo?
Here.
Ms. Creveer?
Here.
Mr. Sly?
Here.
Ms. Squire? Mr. Morse? Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. I understand we need to remove item number two.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
So many.
With the changes?
With the changes amended.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all those opposed? Nay. Abstentions? Five, zero, zero. Still some participation, would anybody sign up?
No.
In that case, approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our July eighth meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Not, it's five, zero, zero. Oh, six, I can't count.
Six.
Six, zero, zero.
It's okay.
Sorry.
I believe you.
Item three. Library application.
Good evening. This is a site plan's SP twenty-five dash seven for the Spring Hill Library, library located at one oh nine South Webster. The applicant is here tonight, or the applicant's representative, so if there's anything I can't answer, they will be here. So B C Design Group on behalf of the owner Johnson County Library District has submitted the site plan for a building addition to the existing Spring Hill Library located at one oh nine South Webster. The proposed plan is a new thirteen hundred eighty-seven square foot building with an updated site circulation and associated improvements. The new building will include things like a children's area and an outdoor seating area. The existing building is about twenty-four hundred square feet. The zoning standards, it meets the building height requirement, which is forty-five feet in the C two district. It meets all the setbacks, building setbacks. And then we do have some variances that we're going to be, that the applicant is requesting. The parking lot encroaches on the ten-foot parking lot setback on the north part, so they are asking, since it's existing, we're just trying to clean it up if they can get a variance for that. They can't make any changes due to the parking lot requirements. So they're just asking to get a variance on that encroachment on the north part. Staff does not see any problems with it since it is existing and it's very minimal encroachment. Number two, this is kind of an if-then statement, so there are mechanical equipments currently on the north part of the building. They need to move it to the east side along Webster. The site didn't show any utility easements over there, so staff has asked them to do a title search just to make sure. They have not received that yet, I don't believe. So if there is a utility easement, they're asking for a variance off of that setback encroachment on a utility easement, staff will work with them to either wall mount the equipment or do something different so that there is minimal or no impact to that utility easement. If there is not a utility easement over there, then this is not necessary. The staff review under the site plan requirements, everything was met. We are asking for a sidewalk to, a public sidewalk to be added on Long Hale Street. There is a trash enclosure that will have a six-foot fence installed around on all four sides. There are going to be three residential-sized bins in there that they have confirmed with Waste Management that it's okay. All utilities are there. And we went over all the setback stuff, so there is a motion, a suggested motion there, and we'll answer any questions.
How big's the difference on the setback?
It's only a couple of feet, I believe. It's not real big, and it hasn't posed a problem before, but we just kind of wanted to clean that up since it hadn't been asked for prior.
So what are they wanting to move to the east side?
The mechan, like HVAC system.
And what does that have to do with the easement?
It would be pretty close to a utility easement if one was there.
It's not a utility, though.
But it, we didn't want it to impede if any utility work needs to be done there.
So if there is a utility easement there, they won't move it?
Though, well, they're working on to see if they can wall mount it to get it up off of the ground.
What about on the roof?
They can't because it's a sloped, it does, it's not a flat.
I've seen them on sloped roofs.
Would that be visible to the public if they run by?
It'll be screened as well, it'll have the same screening that the trash enclosure does.
It won't make any more noise for the neighbors than it does?
No.
Make the wall versus on the ground?
No.
So how big of an HVAC unit are they talking about?
I think it's, it's currently two right now, and I think they're adding two more units. Sure, come on up.
My name is Kurt Brockelman, I'm with the Architect's Office, B C Design Group. I always worry about getting too close and sounding like I'm yelling because I'm a loud talker, so if you can't hear me, raise a hand, let me know. Short version is, these are residential-style systems. Currently, the library has two condensing units, which are exactly what you've seen on the side of your house, located on the north side. We're actually doing something very similar, same-style units, so these aren't big ground-mount, twenty-foot-long, industrial, loud aircraft carrier units, these are residential style. And I had a long talk with the civil engineer yesterday about the title search, it is in action. Had a great meeting today with the contractor about wall mounting options. We're, we're trying to cover every base we humanly can. The roof, you are right, they do mount them on sloped, even on shingles, but that roof isn't designed to support the weight of vibration. And so the cost to bring them up there is cumbersome, might be a nice way to put it.
Sure.
And so we have a couple of alternate options in our hip pocket. But to Amy's point, they're not any louder than what's out there right now, they're not going to be much bigger, they'll be screened, and we don't want them to be on an easement any more than you all do, because I don't want the utility company to have to dig something up and tell us we're going to be without air conditioning while they're doing digging. So it's in everybody's best interest to solve this. We just didn't get the title search done in time, is the honest truth, and I am heartfeltfully apologetic about that. It's kind of a stupid gaffe on our team's part. We're doing everything we can to fix it as quickly as possible. I hope that answered your question, but I may have gone off the rails.
I, I was more concerned about the appearance of it, but if it's going to be screened, I'm not as concerned.
We, actually, the screening is a, that kind of plastic wood look stuff that's going to match the materials of the building, so it should all look like we meant to do it, which is ultimately the goal. Yes, sir.
I mean, that is the main drag for Spring Hill, so.
I'm very well aware of it, I am.
Not the most desirable place to put the air conditioning units, I'm sure.
I don't disagree with you. Yes.
It's okay, I, I, in my job, I understand that sometimes you have to put things where you don't necessarily want to put them, but that's.
Yeah, I, I mean, truthfully, the courtyard is kind of the focal selling point of this project, and it drove a lot of other decisions. If you've had a chance to look through it all, you know that that is a heck of an entry and a radical departure from the current entry sequence and feeling of the library as it exists today. This is a complete makeover in almost every sense of the word. And so facing it towards where, I mean, ideally, we'd love to move the building back so it was facing, but then, don't have that big of a site, I mean, you guys know what we're talking, it's a postage stamp, and we're stuffing it, so much so that we can't fix the parking problem that's been there for, I don't know how long. Long time. Yeah.
I've lived here for thirty years, and it's been here longer than that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can to improve it as much as we humanly can within the confines of, of the land that is owned.
The sidewalk on Nichols is just gonna angle over to the existing sidewalk.
It'll all tie together, we've got ADA ramps and all of it, so that we are code compliant, it's actually, will be an improvement over what's there right now. And the, if I remember correctly, and you may have to correct me if I'm stepping on a line, but the sidewalk that's on Webster is slated to be upgraded and replaced, especially if it gets damaged in any way, shape, or form by our team. If nothing else, even if it remains intact and is still in good shape, I think we still cut in all the new ADA ramps to make sure that it's fully compliant and better than we found it. Did I get that right?
You did.
Oh, yes. It's late, it's towards the end of the day, I'm sure you all are feeling it too. I get out of your way, any other questions or concern?
It looks great.
Great, well, hey, thank you all very much for the time tonight.
Thank you.
Any questions for Amy? Not? Any motion?
I'll go ahead.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan SP dash twenty-five dash seven, as presented by staff. I guess with the contingency of the surge is in there, right?
Yeah, so, here, if I could just have.
Utility.
This will include variance language in there.
Yeah. I couldn't find it on, I didn't bring my copy. Is it on the?
Down towards the bottom.
Oh, yeah. Recommend approval of that. For the Spring Hill Library expansion, including any conditions and/or variances as presented in the staff report.
Second.
Thanks, Amy.
Oh shit, in a second? You start the vote on the left?
Aye.
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 Six, zero, zero. Any abstentions? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the big item. Rhonda.
Good evening. Here we are again. Some of you have met me here too, this would be my third year to bring the capital improvement plan into the planning commission, and it's good to be here again, appreciate the time that you have given us this evening. Two people I want to recognize here, number one, most of you probably haven't had the chance to meet Natalie Tally, she's the accountant that works in the finance department, and this is her project. She's getting more and more involved in the budget, and she's taken this on and carried it from what I was doing to the book that you see today, and I think she's doing a great job. And she takes everything back and implements the changes that we need to. The other person you probably know very well is Jacob Spear, who is the Public Works Director. Sometimes we get deeper into these projects than I can answer, so I called in reinforcements through Jacob because he has a lot of expertises on, expertise on this subject. Okay. So tonight, our objective is to review and answer any questions about the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty proposed Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. And we're going to determine, your job tonight is to determine if the plan supports the comprehensive plan so that we, through capital projects, are accomplishing the goals set out in the comprehensive plan. And then, at the end of the night, my goal is for you to vote to recommend the capital improvement to council as compliant with the comprehensive plan. So that's our goal tonight. I want to talk a little bit about twenty twenty-five before I move into twenty twenty-six. When I inherited the CIP here, the staff called it the place where projects go to die. And I'm pretty proud to say it's not that anymore. Each year, I like to see the city accomplish the things that are on that list or cancel them if priorities change and they're not going to do them, or push them forward when reality sets in about how long something's going to take. And so I just want to talk a little bit about the more than twelve million dollars in projects the city is undertaking in twenty twenty-five. A huge one is the one hundred ninety-ninth Street improvement between Ridgeview and Renner. They're deep into easement requirements, and we'll be moving, acquiring easements, and then we'll be moving a gas line and different things, so that project is moving forward on past the city limits to connect with work with Johnson County. So it'll be like a super two, and it'll be a great improvement in such a high-traffic area for the community and one of our arteries. And so I think that's a great project. They continue to work very hard to get a stoplight at one hundred ninety-first and one sixty-nine, I think we can all agree. That's something that needs to happen, very important to council, and we are moving forward with KDOT support, and that's moving along. Mrs. Feedback, council member, checks up on it every single meeting to make sure progress is being made. We also have sidewalks as a focus, the council recently hopped in a van and went and made a plan in the older part of the town here to build some sidewalks that will get kids to school. We can't do South Street right away, we're working on a grant, it's a huge project, we're not letting it go, but we're making some connections to make sure we get that done and working to communicate with the public on that. The other thing that we're doing is planning some sewer expansions, that is a big part of our future, to expand our sewer system, become a regional player in that, and those things are all happening in twenty twenty-five. So we also are doing work on different buildings, the Aquatic Center and, and things like that as well. So a lot getting done with capital improvements in twenty twenty-five. The other thing I'd like to say about the comprehensive plan is the first year I came here, we had a small sliver of the pie that was actually a funded project, and probably ninety percent or more were unfunded projects. So I think as you go through this plan and you see the list and you go through, there's a whole lot fewer unfunded projects than funded projects now, for different reasons. Allison Abel, who's a city engineer, seems to be the wizard of grants, and she's going out and giving us a lot of grants and doing a lot of good work. So I feel as we go into the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty plan, it's a, really a roadmap to get some things done that the city wants. So I'm going to focus tonight on the new projects for twenty-six, twenty thirty. Those of you who've been on this board a while, you've seen a lot of these projects. I think they're projects you've probably heard discussion about in this room or as well around the city. So I'm going to focus on the ones that are new to this plan. I break these into the categories of the cap, of the comprehensive plan, and I wanted, I pointed out in each one what the tasks are related to this category in the, in the comprehensive plan. So for community development, we want it tastefully and uniquely blend the old and the new, or new and the old. Create logical and well-balanced doc, commercial and residential developments. Maintain colorful and natural appearance and responsibly use or preserve the city's nat, national, natural resources and environment. The project we're adding on this one is Bucyrus Sewer. And this is a, probably a little harder to think about it going into this category, about beautifying our neighborhoods and things like that, but it is thoughtful and well-balanced development for the city. Bucyrus has a sewer plant that the EPA does not want to continue to operate, and so we're going to take over the sewer operation or bring that wastewater into our plant instead, so to make us kind of a regional plant and processor for the area. It also opens that entire area up, if we wanted to develop down that way, the investment will be made. Fortunately, through grants and the work that Miami County and Bucyrus have done, the cost to the city will be about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six to acquire the line. We'll actually take on some of their debt, just what the six fifty is, to get this project done, so that's exciting. We'll expand our line for just six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And how many miles is that going to expand it?
I honestly don't know.
It's at least five.
I think five?
Four, four, five.
Five is what they mentioned to me that.
I was going to say about five.
Across, as a crow flies.
That's a pretty good dollar per mile.
Yeah, this is the best one on here, I like it.
If it was always that dollar per mile, we'd be doing the whole county.
We, yeah, we'd, a lot more sewer lines, yeah. And then moving on to the area public facility projects, the goals within the comprehensive plan for public facilities is the growth of a community is strongly dependent on its attractiveness to potential residents. The availability of jobs, good schools, housing, recreation opportunities, and many other factors drives the city's ability to attract new residents. And the provision of quality-of-life public services, while often taken for granted, is critical to the growth of the city. So these are items that are publicly-owned facilities. And, for example, the police department, we hope someday to have a new civic center, that's been on the plans for several years. But in the meantime, we have a police department in a building they've outgrown, a building that has some issues, foundation-related, AC, heat and cool, those kind of things. So we're going to be making smart investment there. We don't want to fix up a building, we're going to leave, but we also have to have our police department in a good, safe building, so we'll make those kind of improvements. We're going to work on a new city logo, it's been quite some time. I think I heard two thousand and eight was the last time we updated the logo, and we also want to change the city limits signs, maybe a completely different view of our entrances to the city. And those are, in my opinion, both expensive propositions, but there's sort of things that need to be done. Then, for the first time in three years, we have some equipment on here, like a six-yard dump truck. I think we've used the one we have. We've spent that asset, and it's time to invest in a new one for heavier work. We need a sewer combination truck that will be, of course, paid by the wastewater fund, and that does vacuum lines and something else. And jet cleaning as well. Then a pothole patching truck, another good one, we'll look to purchase in twenty twenty-seven. And then Axon is the body camera recording system, operating system of the police department. We used ARPA funds a couple of years ago to buy their current system, and it will eventually need some upgrades by twenty twenty-eight. And those are the new projects related to public facilities. So that leaves us transportation, streets, most, most important thing, top of mind usually with our citizens on the improvements they'd like to see. And this is a category I'm most excited about because when I'm out on social media, these are the things I see people talking about, I take my kids to school on this road, I take my kids to school on that road, my mother lives on that street. And so Allison has worked with the SS four-eight grant program where she got a grant for the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which the city adopted, and now we're in, out of that into the implementation phase. And in that phase, these are the projects that you'll see, which is about public safety. So we'll have improvements around. So we'll have improvements around. Safety improvements at US one sixty nine and Lone Elm. We'll also do safety improvements at one sixty nine and two hundred and seventh. And then everybody's favorite, roundabout at one hundred ninety first and Ridgeview, two hundred and twenty third and Victory. And maybe two hundred and seventh and Ridgeview. Of those, and then safety improvements at two hundred and fifteenth. So you see a pattern there. In the high traffic areas, we're looking at roundabouts to help move traffic where we need it to be. And then also along one sixty nine and the places where the public crosses. The nice thing about this is, and all of the money that's invested there with the grants and the SS four A program. We'll only spend about one percent out of pocket from the citizens of Spring Hill. And the remainder could be funded by grants. That's our goal and we're definitely working towards that.
Rhonda, can I ask you a question? About the first two items? That section of Lone Elm is mostly county. Is that our share that you show there or?
Everything in this plan shows the net share to the city. That one is also, those projects up there will probably have KDOT involved in them. Because of course, one sixty nine's involved, so it'll be a group effort. That one is not. Flushed out yet, if you will. It's not, the, not very far along. And so the further along we get and the costs are more concrete, we'll know who's contributing one.
On the second item, I noticed that Oletha. And I don't know what the result was. Voted on annexing that piece of property. That's connected to this Lone Elm. Does that affect?
It can, yes. It depends on what all, how that all plays out and other things that are happening in that area as well. How it'll impact traffic and what needs to be done to support it through the roads.
No, but does the responsibility of fixing Lone Elm become a Lathus since they're annexing it? And I think it may have passed.
I think their meeting is next week.
I think it's Monday, yeah. And the answer is I don't think so. Because the property that the person owns would be annexed in, the streets around it belong to who they belong to. So if the street belongs to the city of Spring Hill, we'd have to work that out. Same way I put that. I could be wrong, but they're not annexing the streets, I don't believe. Okay.
Where, where at on one sixty nine and Lone Elm? Because aren't those two north-south roads? I'm confused.
It would be like, one is at one hundred and seventy fifth to one hundred ninety ninth, the Long Elm, Lone Elm. And I think the other one is more at one seventy fifth and Lone Elm.
That first one is near the golf course. So where Lone Elm.
Gotcha. Because I was like, I'm picturing the wrong street. Where are we at?
I was thinking it was a different section.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry. And on the ones where you have the two hundred and seventh and one sixty nine, two hundred and fifteenth and I think there was another one. What do you guys have envisioned for that?
I might turn to Jacob for that.
Yeah, so those, those intersections for those section line roads, two hundred and seventh, two hundred and fifteenth and one sixty nine. You know, it's no secret to anyone, those are definite safety, you know, concerns given the traffic and the challenges and trying to cross one sixty nine. We're a little more advanced in, on one hundred ninety first, we're putting that signal in. This is looking at, and right now everything's real conceptual, but looking at safety improvements at those intersections. Whether that's signalization, whether that's, you know, better visibility, whether that, their whole laundry list of potential improvements. No, no, this is looking at, you know, and some of it is putting this money in as a plan. So that if things like grant funding comes to fruition or a funding partnership with KDOT. That, you know, we aren't caught, oh, we, we didn't see this coming and we don't have the money set aside. So a lot of it is, we'd like to see these things happen. If the cards fall just right, we want to be ready to take advantage of it.
Another great, the result of the first part of this grant was the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And it's available online for anyone who'd like to read through and see kind of what the plan was. And they got a lot of community input about the different projects and things that were needed that built into that. Plan that the council adopted and we're going to work forward.
Can you remind me when you guys were talking about that, on Ridgeview, we're at between two hundred and seventh and one hundred and ninety ninth. I know that half of that is city and half of it's county. I know, let's see, it says that in twenty twenty six, you guys have five hundred thousand allocated for that improvement. And then twenty seven, two million. What's the plan there and how much is the county?
Tell, I'm sorry, tell me what this was, what street?
Uh, between one hundred and ninety ninth and two hundred and seventh street on Ridgeview, half of that road is county and half of it is city. What's the plan? Is it to expand it? Is it just the turn lanes for that?
Is that the cars program?
That is a.
Cars program.
Yeah, that's a future cars program. So the, the idea is looking at that fut, at the future development and the increase in development along that stretch. Coupled with its proximity to the high school, we know it's going to see more and more traffic. And it's not too bad a shape right now, but you know, if you see triple the, the traffic volumes that it has. Then we'll see the condition go downhill fast. So we're trying to, to get out ahead of that. We see, we know where the development is coming. We want to get the roads ready for that. It would still be a two-lane road. We're thinking about improved, you know, more turn lanes, shoulders, things like that. So still two lanes, but a wider, more efficient two lanes. And, you know, right now, generally the east half of that, or east side of the road is county, west side is the city. And it may stay that way, or it can change with, you know, new developments coming in. As a cars eligible project, the county pays for fifty percent of the. Say the cars eligible cost, construction, those things, they don't, they don't pay for the engineering design and things like that, but generally.
Listened as a cars program next to the way some of the other ones are, is that something that you guys determine later on? How do you know that that's a cars project if it's not labeled as such?
It's, so we've got a little flexibility in the cars program. So we've got the one year out is absolutely locked in and committed. Years two through five are a plan and, and the county, you know, because the county doesn't approve it until one year before. So the rest of it is, here's what we think our cars projects are going to be. Helps us from a budgetary planning perspective and helps county from a budgetary planning perspective. But, but those move from year to year. A project may move up, may slide down, new one comes in. So there's a little, it's a little fluid. Correct.
And does change sometimes. The other thing, cars is presented is, is a joint effort between the city and the county. And in March, I think about March of every year, it's presented to council as here's the next five-year plan. And then they work through it and agree or change or whatever they need to do. And then we adopted and work on it and wait for the next year's five-year plan.
Is Miami County, do they have a cars program too somewhere?
Theirs is a little bit different. We do receive a portion of road tax from them. And it's not as formal or as, obviously as large as Johnson County's. And they reimburse us for projects. We agree with them. We did a lot of the work in Miami County last year and it was reimbursed, I think over eight hundred thousand from Miami County for that work down there. We kind of get an allocation, then we tell them how we want to spend it and they agree and we get to work. Thank you. Okay. The other thing I wanted to call your attention to is in the book that you got, in the front, there's a couple of pages, I think three. That show you in total, I know tonight, your responsibility isn't the dollars and cents here. It's about the comprehensive plan. But I like to show you in dollars and cents how much we're investing in each category. And then I did two charts, one that shows just straight numbers that we're spending about. The largest percentage is going to be spent on public facilities because we have a wastewater treatment plant. We're making a plan maybe for a new civic or civic center. But when I, I did a second chart for you that shows the categories, if we take those two buildings out, how are we spending the money? When we do that, fifty-nine percent of the funds go to the streets and to transportation, which I think is very important. And the smallest piece of the pie goes to the facilities, which is a good thing. So is there any other discussion you'd like to have or questions you'd like to ask?
I didn't note, Rhonda, I didn't notice the stoplight. I saw it in the plan, but I didn't see it on the, you know, one on the first and.
That's because it's not new. The ones I showed you tonight are just ones that are new to the plan. And we've been working on one hundred and ninety first this year and last year.
And it's like three million or something like that. How mu, how much does it cost to maintain a stoplight like that? I don't even know, like annually?
You know, I'll, I'll be funny.
About, it's way more costly.
I'll be funny with you. We have one stoplight and it hasn't cost too much so far because it's brand new. That's when I know about stoplights. Um, we do pay for the electricity and things like that. To operate it and we have a contract with, we need it repaired or something like that, but it's really, it's very economical at this point.
Yeah, really for the first fifteen to twenty years of its life, they're pretty low maintenance. You may be looking at, say, three to four hundred dollars to, to replace a, you know, if a light, you know, the. Red light goes out, you know, just the, the light fix. I almost said bulbs. They used to be bulbs. Now it's an array of LED lights. But three or four hundred dollars to replace one of those. Outside of that, there's very little cost to those in that first fifteen to twenty years. The, the, the maintenance cost grows exponentially after that as they start to age and begin to have problems. But early on, pretty affordable.
Thank you. I was just curious between roundabouts and stuff.
So on those, so the, I'm assuming that the, the cost, main cost is the sensors and electronics that control the light?
From a construction perspective or a maintenance?
From a maintenance of fifteen to twenty years, those are the things that are going to start wearing out.
It's, it's the, it's the lights and the sensors. Generally lights and sensors. If, if you have a, a lightning strike or something nearby, then, you know, a lot of the other electrical components. You know, it's, it's a rack full of computers that operates those. It's, they're pretty complex, fairly high-tech piece of equipment now. So electrical surges, lightning strikes, things like that can, can wreak havoc on it. That aside, it's the sensors and, and the light fixtures themselves.
So when we're looking at the difference, cost difference between the lights versus the roundabouts. Obviously the roundabouts that require an electricity, but there's more pavement involved with, and so how do they compare as far as costs go? The, more accuracy is spread away for a roundabout. More upfront cost possibly? I don't, it's a question because I don't have a good feel for it.
The upfront cost, construction cost is quite a bit higher for a signal. Roundabouts are, are less expensive. You, what, what you, what you don't necessarily think about with a signal is there are turn lanes required. And if you get those at several hundred feet long, going in, in.
Sure.
A left turn lane and a right turn lane in all four directions. That may be quarter mile worth of road, as opposed to a roundabout is, you know, a few hundred feet of pavement. Also, the, the poles and the mast arms, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment on a, on a traffic signal. In addition to those pavement enhancements. So the roundabout is less expensive to construct initially and, and a little, and over its life. You know, over its life cycle, quite a bit less to operate and maintain as well.
So when we went with the, our only light in Spring Hill, was that because of KDOT? Is that KDOT right away or did they require that as opposed to putting a traffic circle in there?
Yeah, it, there are, there are times where. You know, one traffic control device is just more appropriate than others. The one at one hundred ninety ninth and Webster is in such close proximity to the KDOT traffic signal at one sixty nine. That, you know, a roundabout counts on regular. You know, just a constant flow of traffic through it and not these big, heavy surges. Well, when that light at one sixty nine turns green, you get a great big, heavy surge. And so a roundabout in close proximity to that doesn't function the way a roundabout's intended to function. So it's the proximity to the one sixty nine that says, hey, a signal is the more appropriate way to go there.
I, I knew that there was a reasoning why they did it that way. I was just kind of curious. Because if it costs more to do it that way, it doesn't seem like it's more desirable.
Great. Any other discussion?
The city whole bunker remodel is intended for, for long term.
You bet. The building is right back here and used to be city hall and it was police department. And we have worked to make it watertight. We have a new roof on it. We've done an interior, you know, repaint and things like that. We want to be able to at least use it for storage and things like that as opposed to a building with no purpose. And so I believe we also looked at HVAC in there so that we could do record storage and things like that, if I remember right.
So will you guys still continue to use that when the new complex is built?
No.
What would the intent and purpose be moving forward then with that?
The bunker, it will probably go with this building when it is sold or used for a different purpose. It's also, could be used for the public as a storm shelter if we wanted to. But it depends on the disposal of this building, if you will. We're trying to be mindful and cost-effective. If we're really going to build another building, if we're going to move public works. Well, we want to be careful about what we're spending money on. And we keep rolling back, like the bunker, some of the things we've done there. We were going to put a big HVAC in there to have it temperature-controlled for records and all these things. And we decided we could go a different route because we want to make sure it's a good investment if we're not here for many years. We want it to be serviced for the time we need it to be here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the reasoning behind needing a new civic center?
We actually are outgrowing this one. And as an example, I'm in the finance department, which is right over here, and I cannot add another employee if I need it to. We have one conference room and the whole thing. We hope that that's something that we can partner in different ways, like the police department, if you haven't been over there. They have definitely outgrown their building and assembly. And so we took it as a time to maybe sell this building or, or give it a different public use. And then combine some other needs that we have and put it all in one building. But we're outgrowing the buildings that we have.
So back when this was remodeled, my husband was actually the superintendent for the company that built and remodeled this building. So I know a little bit behind the scenes stuff. One of those being that the person that was in charge of overseeing everything left the city. And then a lot of stuff went down in that time. But being able to be behind the scenes, I personally felt like a lot of the space was not used properly or anything like that. And having lived here my whole life, I know that one thing that happens all the time in Spring Hill is we move into a building, renovate it. And then within seemingly a few years, we've got to move on because we've outgrown it. So what will prevent that from happening in the future? Why can't we add on to this building? Why can't we not build a brand-new complex?
We have looked at different options and we have done a. A study, it has a special name, where it's a space study. So they look at in the future, in five, ten years, thirty years, how many finance employees will there be? What do they do? What are their functions? What does the court look like? What does the PD look like? Where do we park? What do we do with prisoners? What do we do with the dog, you know? And they did a study and based on our needs over the next decades, few years, not few, it's decades. Looked at the space requirements and then designed a building to meet those requirements. Designed a shell to meet those requirements. We're far, far away from designing a building. And then we did consider things like, I'm like, I don't know, we got a gym down here. Let's put the police department in there. And hey, they used to live over here. Let's put them in the bunker and things like that. But we think the opportunities for this building for the community would be better if we were not in it. And so let's look at what another plan would be. And we're, when the time comes, there'll be a lot of public input to how we do that. And where it goes and all those kind of things. We've just done very preliminary studies of how big, how much space do we need? And what would that space cost if we, and that's where we are.
Okay. And I just, I've seen the way it's trended in the past and so I'm very leery of anything like that. Because it's, on the outside, it feels like it's just a gross waste of taxpayer dollars.
We'd like it to be. We'd like it to be, continue to be used for the taxpayers. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
It does.
I will add, in addition to those space, the space needs, there's also just the functionality of the space. And, you know, this building was designed and built as a school in the nineteen fifties. And I'm certain it was a great design concept for a school in the nineteen fifties. Trying to make that fit a city municipal complex facility in twenty twenty-five is kind of the stereotypical round peg square hole, um, kind of thing. And, uh, a new facility would allow us to make it more, you know, purpose-built, designed, uh, oriented as well. So that we're not kind of chasing that, well, we, we tried to make this work, you know, with something else and say, wh- what is it really supposed to be? What do we need it to be and let's start from that spot.
Yeah. I should know, this project went grossly over budget as well, after all of the renovations and changes after that one, um, ex-city employee left. And so it's, I feel, I feel, again, trending from the past, I feel like the citizens have been burned many times with things like that.
Right.
It's, there's a lot of hesitation on my part about things like that.
Understood.
It's in the planning stages.
That's exactly right. We're a long ways.
Um, the other, oh, sorry, the other question I have is, are, these are just like proposed ideas of, sorry, I'm within six months on plan.
Um, it's all good.
I'm.
It's all good.
Um, this is all just proposed ideas, like are any of these set in stone already or how does?
Some of, some of them are yes. Um, some of them are projects, uh, cause we're looking at twenty-six and beyond. Some of them are projects that are starting in twenty twenty-five. I'll give you an example. We're doing the northeast, uh, extension of the san- of the sewer. And that is bonded and planned and engineers involved in it. So it is going forward. Some of the work will be done in twenty-five and completed in twenty-six. Others are where we say, and I'll give you an example, Hale Street and Nickel Street. We're gonna do something about those two streets. Um, we think it's gonna cost quite a bit. We think it needs a complete overhaul. So those are less concrete. We know it's gonna happen, so we wanna get it in a five-year plan, but they're less concrete. The near years should be a whole lot more concrete than twenty thirty because we should be making those plans and hiring work done and things like that now.
Sure.
Yeah.
So this is, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I wrap my head around it. This is to make sure that we have enough money planned.
Right.
Lotted for all of these things, just in case they come about or are already coming about or whatever.
Right.
Things could be. Okay, okay, thank you.
And also I, I look at it too as a tool where the, the citizens can look at it and say, well, I want them to work on my street. I live on Nickel Street. What are they doing about Nickel Street? We can say, we have it in our plan, it's in, you know, very early stages. We, we are showing the citizens, we are making a plan.
I love that.
Is that right?
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
And it's also in a way like sidewalks. We put money in for sidewalks every year and we wanna make, because we wanna make sure that gets done. Not just a, yeah, yeah, we'll get it done, but, uh, yeah, we're gonna spend the money on the sidewalks. We wanna spend it on curb and gutter. How much are we spending on streets? Things like that.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Is there a way to like mark which ones are set in stone? Maybe fold or just a checkmark next to it or?
Uh, sure.
Do you already have that or not just seeing it?
No, I don't think we do have it in there like that, but we can.
Like an asterisk or?
Yeah.
Mark or something or, you know, like gender, so she knows what we all do, but.
Right.
Be helpful for a newer one.
It may also be a good sort, instead of trying to put nine hundred items on one list to say, okay, here's the concrete list and the future list, kind of a thing, so you can, out of hands.
Stop making it super complicated.
No, exactly.
Like just a checkmark or something, so you know that this one, hey, this is happening.
Yep.
It's not, you know.
I mean, I.
Funded and unfunded.
The other thing to understand is it, it, it's a planning document.
Right.
That's why.
It's a living.
The nearest off-year is more concrete than the one that's three years over. Because priorities will change and somebody will say, well, this is more important than that that we were gonna do in twenty-seven, so now that moves up or.
And I'll give you an example.
Goes back.
We had a project we planned to do, I think on woodland. And cars came in and said, we're gonna do a project on woodland. We said, well, we'll just take our project out and put the cars project in its place, things like that. I think it's also important that it is a living document and it is, this does not authorize anybody to go spend money. The council will do the actual authorization and choice of spending money that way. Um, whether they bond it or spend cash or whatever they do with it, in the end, the council makes a decision on every project.
Cool.
Or says no.
Yeah.
Perfect. So Q had said that we're in the process of right-of-way acquisition. I live on a Hundred and Ninety-Ninth Street between Ridgeview and, I don't remember.
Renner.
And Renner.
Yeah.
Um, and you said there was a, a gas line being relocated?
Mm-hmm.
Are they paying for that or are we paying for that? Is the city, is Spring Hill paying for that or is the gas company paying for that?
We pay for that to move their line.
Because it's.
Because we need it moved, they don't.
Okay, so I work in utilities and oftentimes, so is it in the right-of-way or is it a utilities?
I believe it goes under the road if I'm not mistaken. I might be wrong about that.
Yeah, it's, it's in a, it's in the right-of-way, um, in, in the current street right-of-way. But it, a lot of it is, uh, issues with, well, twofold. One, there's some conflicts, uh, with the storm sewer that needs to go in.
There always are conflicts with the storm sewer.
Yeah. And, and right now there is, you know, it's, it's, it's just ditches. So, um, that's part of it. And the, and the other part is neither the gas company nor the city really wants that gas main underneath the main lanes of the road. So, uh, but the, you know, the road project is gonna take the bulk of the right-of-way. So what, uh, we are acquiring, uh, on, on Atmos' behalf, a, a gas easement outside of the right-of-way, uh, to, to relocate that. But generally speaking, because it's located, if it's within, you know, right-of-way or, or easement and it's where it's supposed to be and, and our project, you know, we need it to move, uh, to facilitate our project, then that cost, you know, usually falls, falls to us.
The other thing, don't forget, this is a cars project, so about fifty percent of it'll come from Johnson County as well.
So, I know that KDOT is looking at going to joint trench for their projects and then renting out the facilities that they are placing. Has the city looked at doing that? Uh, dumb question. I figure the city has, has looked at that, I, on a, on a return on investment, what, how many years does that take typically?
It, boy, there is not a good formula for that because so much of it depends on, you know, how, how many other entities.
Are interested in going in.
You know, are, are interested in going in that. And that's, that's really been one of the, the challenges that we've had as we've looked into that, uh, a lot, especially for telecommunications. Um, there's a spaghetti network of telecommunications lines, uh, in the right-of-way. And we've looked at trying to streamline that. But to get those companies to all agree, uh, to, to cooperate and not take the lead, you know, they, they are used to taking the lead on their project five times over. So asking all of them to take a, a backseat, so to speak, and, and say, come into this one because it makes sense, it's an uphill battle.
So is the, is it possible for the city to, on a new roadway, require them to go into, into a joint agreement?
I'm done.
Require throwing me in.
Because if it's a, be, well, so one way that it could happen is you don't allow any other right-of-way except for what you're giving for them to. If there's no right-of-way for them to place into and you're, and you've got the only access to it, then they're literally forced into the, into that.
Just give them a pipe.
Yeah, I think if, you know, I don't.
You don't give them a pipe, you rent a pipe to them.
Yeah, you rent a pipe.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that renting, I think the, you know, if we were, if we were giving it to him and I'm, Spencer could tell me, uh, if I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think if we were, if we were giving it to them, it might be a little easier to say, it, you know, you have to go in here and, and as long as it's available, we won't let you locate, you know, anywhere else. If we start charging for that, who's to say they couldn't, you know? If, if they can make a, a good case that they could install it in a different location and a different manner at less cost to them and we're forcing, you know, them to spend more and spend it with us, I suspect that would, that would get sticky, yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea, so.
Well, like.
We'll see where it goes.
I work in, I work in this industry and.
Yeah.
And I see where things are going and that is where communities are going to.
Right.
Is there, they're not acquiring any more right-of-way, then there's only limited amounts. So if you wanted to place something, there's no right-of-way for you to place anything new. So you're forced into going to their, to their rented pipe.
Right.
The other thing that we've seen is, uh, there's no more right-of-way, um, to expand horizontally. You go vertical. Yeah, that, uh.
That's great if there's no rock.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, but, but that's, that's how you, that's how you can justify, it's less expensive for them to, instead of them having to bore it eight feet deep through, through solid rock, they have a trench that, or a joint pipe that, that they can, that they can rent for.
Yeah.
Minimal compared to the cost of that. And if we're putting it in, we don't have to go, as a city, we don't have to go eight feet deep because we have, we can place it wherever we want to and we're designing the road.
We, we've seen it, just give you a quick anecdotal, that, just what the market is doing. Uh, there's a new subdivision in the city and a company came in wanting to proactively, the, the roads were in, but not a single house had been built, very little infrastructure, uh, in place. And a, and a company came in wanting to install conduit to lease or resell to telecommunications companies. And they went out to all of the telecommunications companies that provide service in Spring Hill and said, here's what we'd like to do, you know, we'll put it in all at once. I, I don't know the, you know, the details, you know, financially, but that idea of co-locating in, in one, one trench, one, you know, group of conduits, I loved the idea. I was excited about it. It's great, that would be wonderful. They had one taker out of the five telecommunications companies that are, that are in the city. And I, I don't, I'm not sure the ink had dried on my signature for that right-of-way, uh, permit. And one of the companies that said, no, we don't wanna co-locate, came in with an application to, to run a second bore rig and, and put condu-. I, I have to think that was more expensive. It was absolutely more time-consuming. But that was, that was the route that they chose to go. Now, we didn't, we didn't force it, it was voluntary, but for one, one reason or another, that's what the market is, is dictating. Even when the opportunity presents itself, they're, they're not availing.
Actually, before you, you guys came to Spring Hill and before all these companies came to Spring Hill, one of the things that we were pushing, that there'd be a single conduit that maybe the city would put in and then you'd get the providers and nobody bit then either. And this is seven, probably seven years ago.
I, I talked with a local developer encouraging, um, is the electric lines, the gas lines, the water lines, those are planned with the development. The telecommunications is not. And I was talking with, with a developer, it's like, why don't you get out in front of that and, and plan for that telecommunications infrastructure, just like you planned for and install all of the other infrastructure, uh, for, for subdivision? And he was very honest and, and it was telling. He said, all of those other, the, the ones that they're already doing, all of those utilities that they do currently are utilities that the developer has to pay for the installation of those. The telecommunications, they do not. You know, whether it's Comcast or Clearwave or, or any of those that come in, the company bears the cost, uh, of that installation. And, and so the developer is not gonna spend their money to put in infrastructure that they can get for free. And, but then you lose all control.
We'll have to talk some.
Are there other questions? My knees have given out, so I took a seat, sorry. Um, any other questions or discussion you'd like to have from the CIB? Is there anything missing? Something you really thought would be on there that's not?
Well, there's a.
Ninety-one pages later.
There's a lot of things on there, but I, I think what I enjoy, enjoy, if that's the correct word, is the way you lay it out. Because it's much clearer to relate it to the, what's in the comprehensive plan and say, yeah, that, that works. It's, it's in this area, so.
I appreciate that feedback.
I was just gonna resemble that remark that Adolfo said, especially the definitions. You have the financial sources.
Yeah.
Uh, the city funds. Um, it goes back and reminds us that fifty percent of the cars is paid by the county, fifty percent by the city. And also the matrix you put together to, in conjunction with this, is very, very.
Good.
Good, I think. It's some of the best stuff we've seen, so.
Thank you. Thank, I'll give that credit to Natalie. I, I think it's really important that you have a one-stop shop for capital improvement. We used to give you a spreadsheet with, you know, these, and you wouldn't know what we meant by a Hundred and Ninety-Ninth Ridgeview to Renner. And this gives us a chance to give you a lot more, more information instead of just data. And I think.
It's a great reference.
She's done a beautiful job with it.
Yes, thank you. This has come a long way since we.
Yeah, it sure has. It sure has. And it gets easier every year. I, I don't do the work, so it gets easier.
I like the pictures.
Yeah, we do.
Cause it shows, you know, like where the, you know, what it looks like now.
Yep, and a map and, uh, all those kinda things. Um, when you're ready, there is a motion, um, if you're ready to vote one way or the other on, um, recommending to the council that this comprehensive plan is compliant with the, I'm sorry, that this capital plan is compliant with the comprehensive plan would be the motion, um, for you to consider.
There are not any other questions, we can entertain the motion.
I'm sorry, really quick. How do we know if it compares to the comprehensive plan?
We have a comprehensive plan. We just don't have.
How old is it?
Two thousand and seven.
Oh, just a couple of months then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, then.
Although you're all working on a comprehensive plan.
Right.
But I look forward to having and changing this.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, it's hard to say in total confidence that.
Right.
You know, adheres to the comprehensive plan, but in our experience over the years, I think it does. But it, I mean, it's a great question.
And the way Rhonda has laid it out with those.
With the objectives.
Major topics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Relate to the objectives in the, in the comprehensive plan. Granted.
Right.
It's very old.
Right.
Right.
I look forward to changing it all next year when we have a new comprehensive.
Well, and then that was gonna be my second question, is what happens if the comp plan changes? And then is all of this moot or does it continue on or how does that work? But, okay.
In the cycle.
The rolling.
Yeah.
It all just.
It'll recycle.
We come every year.
Yeah.
And do a new one. And when you adopt a new comprehensive plan, the next time you see a, a capital plan, it will be in compliance with the, your new plan.
Adjusted.
Bueno, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that goes, then I move to recommend the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty capital improvement plan to the Spring Hill City Council as compliant with the comp plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let's go to the left.
Aye.
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 All those opposed? None? Any abstentions? None? Passes, six, zero, zero.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your support.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, all three of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion on you.
Um, yeah, so I have on here, last month, we talked about starting up the comp plan discussion again. So we had talked about September fourth and I just wanted to make sure that date and time still worked for most everyone.
That was at six, right?
Yeah.
September fourth?
Yeah, it'll be before, right before the regular meeting, Thursday.
Okay. Oh, it's Thursday.
Yeah, that's the one.
Sorry, I'm trying, I'm still in the fog here when, uh, Labor Day. Six o'clock, you said?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you ask Josh if he would bring some of his renderings?
I will, yeah.
Well, and maybe it should be subject to if Josh can make it, right? He's the, he's the main guy.
Um, and then for the July uh tenth, um, there were no agenda items um on the city council meeting. And July twenty-four city council meeting, they did approve the zoning amendment um that you all recommended for the height in the industrial districts.
They did change the setback, though.
Um, they did, they.
Went back to.
They went back to what it originally was.
Twenty.
It was originally twenty. And that's all I have.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Are there such a thing as term limits? On like city planning and things like that and other commissions and boards?
Yep, not for Spring Hill, but in Lawrence, they have this three-year term. Did you know that? For city planning commission members? So it depends on the city.
So after three years, they have to step down?
Yep.
Wow.
Continually turning over.
Interesting.
And they meet twice a month, so the, for, once, once a month, they meet just to talk about process. Cause everybody's new, everybody's rotating.
Yeah, that's a little excessive.
I just wanted to tell you.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Differences and differences.
Okay.
Yeah, not here, though.
Spring Hill does not.
Is there a way to get term limits on things?
Do you want term limits on?
I think there should be.
I don't agree. I don't think, no, because you don't have the ones that like Cindy and Steve and Troy that can go back and be like, well, twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Which is very helpful.
Yeah. I just know that several times prior, I've applied for planning, but I never even got a chance to interview or anything. Because, oh, well, they're just gonna keep their spot, and it's like, well, how do you know that someone better potentially isn't? Out there if you don't even give them an opportunity, and so I was thinking, not that like you can only serve for your two terms. And then you're done completely, but maybe like take a term off and then come back and apply or something, but then it gives. It does give opportunity for other people out there to get on and to make a difference, or, and if they're not, yeah, then bye. You know, I don't know.
I think it's.
Well, but see, we're, we're appointed by the mayor.
I was gonna say.
Right.
And just because I'm on doesn't mean he's going to reappoint me.
Right.
So, he, because he posts the opening, and if there's other people that apply, he may say, well, you know, Rodolfo's been there too long.
Nominated by the mayor, approved by the governing.
Yeah.
Governing.
And we have talked about, if people aren't making, or their attendance is not appropriate, then. We've had discuss, we've had many discussions.
And that was an issue I had run into too with when I applied and everything else, and so.
It all needs to run through city council. He'd have to change city code to create that, so you all don't have to set that for yourself, yeah.
We changed the height requirement for industrials, let's change this. You're sitting there on your own, girl. Sorry, I'm sorry. I know I wasn't here for the July meeting. I do feel like that was kind of um rushed, the change of code. I, I would just like to put it on record, I would have voted no. So, just wanna put that out there, but also, yeah, I think a lot of codes need changed and updated and everything else in this town, because. It's a little outdated, a little outdated.
In addition to what you're saying right there, um, I was approached by somebody that is a builder out of town. And he was actually complaining about our, uh, building codes being so out of date, that he does have construction workers from, or I guess. Project leaders from up north, and, you know, we were told a couple of times when I asked about when we were going to update them. That when they come in from the north, that they go with the building codes, the current building codes, and that just because ours are out of date. Uh, he said that is not the case, and he's been very frustrated by it, so I just wanted to pass that along to you all. Um, I think that there was a couple of the places that he said that they had inspectors come in. And they were not passing with our inspectors, and he was like, well, they're saying that it's up to date to our code. Spring Hill code, and so they didn't have to go above and beyond, so I did just wanna pass that along to you guys. And also in addition to that, this is my last meeting. I'm gonna miss you all, um, we purchased a home in Johnson County. So I'll no longer be able to be eligible to be the Miami County rep, so it's been fun. I wish that we could have uh gotten the comprehensive plan done while I was here, but I have faith that you guys will all keep going with the work sessions. And get it done and look forward to seeing it, so. That's all I think I have.
Well, for your service.
Hate to see you go.
She's good too, I mean.
She kept us.
I think I'll resign and let Kat apply for my position.
I'll come up in citizen participation, how's that sound?
Yeah, it's where you started.
I mean, I, my, my binders will always be available.
We'll allow you to speak.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. I'll do it.
We're gonna time you on your three minutes.
Well, she gets six, since she.
Yeah.
No, everyone gets the same. Everyone gets the same.
I, I appreciate the opportunity and it's been fun, and uh it's been great working with you all, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There's cupcakes behind you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing, so talking about parts of code that you all would like to see changed. Certainly, as we go through these meetings once a month, and if you keep seeing the same issues pop up, where developers are asking for deviations or variances. Or you keep seeing things that don't make sense, bring them up, take a note, shoot an email to Amy. As we start seeing trends, that's a good reminder, like, oh, hey, maybe it's time to change this, maybe it's time to go create an M two. But those are the things that, you know, sometimes staff.
Absolutely.
Is working very hard to get you guys the packet and review things, and that thirty thousand foot level, especially without a director at the moment.
Yeah.
It's, it's, might get, you know, forest and trees lost a little bit there, so don't be afraid to say, hey, I, I keep seeing this issue pop up. Let's talk about changing it. Amy, can we have a discussion item and talk about it, and you guys come to a decision, then we can. I can work with Amy and mock up a code change, and you guys can vote on it and send it to council, so.
I will say that we are going through our code, the current chapter seventeen, um, and just trying to, I have a big folder of things. That the staff thinks needs changed, it's just, you know, having the time to, to get it here, yeah.
We make it sound all simple. There you go, we're gonna do it.
And it, and it's difficult for us until somebody like comes up to Kat, a, a builder, and says, hey, your code's outdated. This is what I'm seeing different. It's almost like we need different developers.
So one of my friends is a Realtor, and she said that a lot of builders love to come build in Spring Hill, because it's cheaper, because they don't have to. Be up to some of the codes up north, and so that's why a lot of developers want to build down here, which is kind of good for us. But not if everything's not up to go.
We are working on code update still.
Well, I mean, I think Amy and Pat talked to us several times about the fact that. You, you two are interested in, in, in making some changes on some of the codes, because no, they didn't. They don't relate to what.
Right.
I mean, is there a plan to get the building and the, and not the building, the um, like the electrical code to be, as I know Pat was saying, that the. Books were so expensive and.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're working on updating it all. Um, Will, the building inspector, has been attending some of the meetings. Um, for the Home Builders Association, so, you know, working in con, in conjunction with some of the other surrounding cities that are updating. Um, just trying to, they're all coming together in meeting, so we are trying to get it to where, um, we can get it updated. Bring it to you.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, again, if you have a cons, specific concerns, I would bring them up at one of our work sessions. Because then we, we know what we need to look at and, um, and it's probably already in Amy's list anyway.
Are the work sessions open to the public?
I was gonna ask this too. Are they um livestreamed as well?
No.
No.
Yep, work sessions are, are an open meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Anytime that many of you are together talking about the business of the planning commission.
Gotcha.
Okay, anything else?
I don't think we've ever had anybody come to any of our work sessions.
I don't know why not, it sounds exhilarating.
I've been kind of surprised, but you know.
Didn't Bill Peterman, he did.
Came once and we scared him off.
That's so funny.
Anyhow. I hear a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Who was the second?
I.
Hi.
One of us, whoever.